...open public meetings act, an ethical notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this meeting was provided in the notice of September 16th, 2011. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the board of education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, the North Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Council, posted on the district website. This is an official note. Please stand for a minute, son. It's supposed to be building Afghanistan on Saturday, and it's like...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Global.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton here. Mrs. Flynn here. Mr. Kazinsky?
Here.
Dr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rogers? Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Spillera?
Here.
Mr. Spizardo?
Here.
Mr. Correa?
Here.
Approval of the minutes, motion?
I think most of you approve this email.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Minutes are approved. Correspondents?
There is a debate.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I have a big deal to talk about, a lot to actually happen, even though we've been close for a bit. I've received a great deal of feedback from following the superintendent, the presentation on superintendent's goals. In doing it all, there seem to be a number of questions, both in the district and in the approach of the meeting, about student assessment in general. For this reason, after working with Mr. Bellani, we'll be working with the academic committee and the plaintiffs at the next board meeting. We'll begin our meaningful conversation on student performance as well as assessment data, and we'll make a public presentation about that so we can generate consistent conversations with our community. I also want to talk a little about a specific goal within the superintendent's goal, strategic planning. Common vision specifically, the idea that we're going to begin strategic planning work this month officially. It's going to be challenging work, and we'll take the rest of the year as spoken about before. We have to form a leadership team representing each of the stakeholder groups within the district. We're going to be harnessing the power of the internet, using surveys for parents, community members, administrators, faculty, as well as staff. Those are going to go out within the next four weeks. We're going to be holding community meetings with various stakeholder groups to facilitate input. As well, we're going to, the district website will become the central focus for this work, so I want to kind of make that public, that we will create a separate page involving or specific to common vision, to strategic plan, that everyone will be able to go to for all the updates. We're looking to involve anyone who's interested and has something to say about the school district. We want to make sure that we do it the most effective and efficient way, but we're hoping for everyone to come out and speak their mind. Specific outcomes for the work are detailed in the superintendent's goals, which were presented in both the presentation and the goals themselves are on the district website. We will engage the assistance of a consultant, which we spoke about at the board, as all districts want to take this kind of work, do. And that consultant will assist me in both with the planning, the gathering, organizing, analyzing, collecting information, as well as the analysis of the data that we have to go through from the district. And we'll help run a leadership team, which will be their most critical role. It's going to be an exciting year. There'll be a lot behind it, but I look forward to what we will achieve by May. Just a quick recap of school boards. We had a number of board members go down, and communication with those, keep that informative and tailored to their needs specifically. From the administrazione side, we had an opportunity to do with vendors, specifically many who currently support our technology, as well as many who can support our technology moving forward. There were legislative updates, many of which have been shared through briefing, and they include teacher evaluation, salary and energy savings, related as well as what's going on in the future with student assessment, which will impact every district. I did want to talk about an addendum. Again, I said we're going to try and limit the addendums, but in order, just some history, in order to meet the current budget, one of our critical administrative positions was not built. We had found, as could have been predicted at the time, that the burden on our current staff would prove difficult, especially with all the new things, I as superintendent am kind of asking our administrators to do. For that reason, based on the existing budget, we cannot bring back a full person, but based on the recommendation of the board, I reached out to our past board member who graciously agreed to return on interim basis. We've been waiting for the paperwork from the state and from NJPSA regarding this last piece of information before moving forward. I am happy to report that we received the information that was necessary, and so we're recommending the appointment of Mr. Vialante as the interim coordinator for world language, as appears to meet them this evening. I've spoken at length with Mr. Vialante about what I see as a bright future that's needed for our world language program, as well as our ESL bilingual programs. We need to make sure that everything's, every student is supported, but also that our every student has access to a rich and diverse world language program. Again, as I said before, never want an item on the agenda unless we know it is an item that will be able to move forward. This is why we kind of held out the addendum and the twice before you. I want to thank the procurement committee for its work and talk about kind of what's happened since our presentation. The results of which have been disseminated to the entire board, set for review at this week's administration committee. I've received strong feedback regarding the proposed bylaw changes, and I'm confident we'll be able to get an amended document to the entire board for that for a first reading on the very next agenda. The timeline doesn't hold us back, though, from implementing the findings of the procurement committee and their recommendations regarding requests for a proposal. That said, we have put two appointments on hold. Earlier this year, as we waited for the IHOP committees' findings and recommendations, now that we have them, we're working right now to reopen both the search for the court attorney, as well as the athletic position. We are also, I want to point out, developing an RFP which will follow the same, self-same recommendations coming from the IHOP committee for a new student information system, and now be going through the administrative and academic committees, and then move forward with that and working with our technology department, as well as Mr. Bellani, to make sure that it has everything that we need. I am concerned about our current student information system, number one, is not highly based, and while it does offer security issues, it also makes it difficult for everyone to access the information that needs. We need a single system to make sure that all of our faculty, our administrators, have access to the information that they need in a timely way, and basically when they need it. As of right now, it's not exactly how it is. We need to get information consistently on all levels, centralized various aspects, including especially our health and our special services information, so that all teachers have access to the information they need to serve students the way they need to be served. We need to build consistency and efficiency, and just coming from the community, things like the parent portal affecting our grading policies and working with the parents as a partner in college education, those things are critical and part of what I, yes, so they're important, and they are. I want to update on construction very quickly. We had our weekly construction meeting, and thank Mr. Nicolet, Mr. Rigga. I'm happy to report that we are moving now on schedule to the final stages of the referendum. There are very few items remaining, both at the high school and at two of the elementary schools. That being said, we are hoping that within this month to be done with the major pieces of the referendum, and at that point to compile the information and make a public presentation to the board on the referendum, including what the initial goals were, timelines, budget pieces, the rest, what we've accomplished, what there is still left to do, was hanging out there, but to make that information public. That's the good news. I want to also update you on Spring Garden. At this point, I'm confident, saying there are three separate issues affecting the Spring Garden floor. Working directly with DPC to determine the most attractive way to get to each of the three, two of them are fairly simple, and we can correct once we get everyone on the same page. The third issue is what's holding us back. It does involve the area of the floor that was damaged by, I don't want to say the leak in the roof, because the roof was an issue, but the leak caused by the incorrect installation of the rooftop cube. That has affected more of the floor than we thought, and our goal is to work with GPC right now to make sure that we can get the insulation company back in, who give us exactly what needs to happen at that time. Our goal right now is early next week to have them here so we can have a recommendation via emails to the board, as far as what we can do to move forward, and then take every step, and every day that we wait is a day lost getting that gym and fairness renewed into the winter. We need that facility, so we're doing everything that we can. Again, when it comes to money, construction never moves as fast as we would like. Just a brief report, our update on Tri-Tech, I did hear from Mr. Cosma. He was before, the new judge of, again, and they reviewed, reconsidering Judge Kenny's earlier rulings, as well as the claims and counterclaims that are still outstanding. The judge asked the specific questions of all involved, and at this point in time, we're waiting, hopefully in the next 10 days, to hear back on her determinations based on those files. From there, I can make a more specific, I think a more specific update. What will most likely happen is that the settlement, we're hoping for a determination debate about the settlement agreement, and then we can actually move forward at this point. Finally, I just want to talk about the emergency closing, apparently affected a couple people. I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners, as well as all the officials from the different commissions and workers from our health and security, the chiefs and deputy chiefs, everyone of those, it's really all hands on deck. Definitely want to thank Tom Nicolet, he leads our office of emergency management, and he did a fantastic job getting us together, keeping us on task, and getting information from us and to us. I definitely also want to thank Tom Nicolet, who followed our custodial maintenance and grounds crew, did a phenomenal job working under tight conditions to make sure our buildings were safe and ready for our students and staff. I've only been in town for a few months. That being said, as part of the ODM team, I was surrounded by people with a vast collective knowledge of this town and specific history, and according to them, Nutley has been hit by, or was hit by a storm, the likes of which we have not seen in recent history. And though it initially seemed innocuous, the damage that this storm caused really shut down the town for a while. I've been in the district every day, Saturday through, working with our staff, as well as the townspeople, communicating with everyone that I possibly could communicate with, to try and get the schools open as quickly as possible, but to make sure at all, at all steps, that we're doing so safely. I'm happy to report that we are open for business tonight, and we'll be open for school tomorrow. I do, though, want to take this opportunity to encourage the community, the parents especially. I want to make them aware that, according to our safety officials, there are still areas of town that pose significant risk, and that while everyone feels it is safe to reopen schools and the town, that we want to encourage parents to make sure students get to and from school safely, and that can be them transporting them or accompanying them to school, or at least communicating, especially to the older students who may take it for granted they can walk safely down the sidewalk, that there are areas of concern, and that everyone needs to be aware and proceed with caution. During the past few days, I want to review, it was not called practice, we've utilized our website, email, text messaging, as well as our electronic phone system to communicate with everyone, and I want to encourage the community to visit our website and see what options that are out there for them, and we're making available to them so that they can receive information through the media that is most convenient for them. I want to thank our technology department for making all those different avenues available and helping me through them in a very timely manner. We're doing our best to make sure that we communicate constantly, and I think the pattern demonstrated not only commitment to, but our ability to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Board of Secretary of State, report.
Yes, I'd just like to report to the board on the status of the audit. Auditors have been in doing their work, and they should be concluding their review this Friday, after which they will present us with a preliminary status of findings and give a report at the next finance meeting. We were scheduled to have the facility review as part of NJQSA this Friday, but I received a message today from the executive county business administrator that he is wanting to reschedule that, and right now we are looking at having the facility reviewed on November 18th. He will be visiting the high school, the middle school, and Radcliffe. The fixed asset update is being concluded this weekend as well, and that report will also be forwarded to the auditors to be incorporated into the yearly capra. I also would like to extend my thanks to the Buildings and Grounds Department for the fabulous job they have done over the past few days, and also to the town for all their support.
Thank you, Mrs. Hammonds. Committee reports.
Mr. President, the administration committee will be meeting on Thursday, 5:00. At that time, we will be discussing the best practice proposal. We'll deal with that and make sure that we resolve that issue on Thursday night, along with a discussion and a presentation, or at least a question answered with a solar consulting that we are undergoing. Commissioner Tucci will be present at that meeting, and hopefully we'll have some positive outcome from that meeting. You have a report on next morning.
Thank you, Mr. Kazinsky. I have a report from the Finance Committee. We met on October 20th. Agenda topics included the current budget year. Part of our discussion, we agree that the bill list will be sent to the Finance Committee as soon as is available, or the usual committee members will review that list, and if any questions we have, it will be time to get answers from our business administrator. We looked at the 2012-2013 budget development. We reviewed projected salary schedules, healthcare costs, and change in revenues, and from what we can see, this will be another difficult year putting the budget together. It's not going to get any easier this year than it has been in the past few years. Board members who are around, they know what that means, that it's going to be a tough time. Negotiations, we talked about negotiation strategies, and as a result, Mrs. Flynn brought to our attention that as members of NJASBA, we can get a free review of our collective bargaining unit contracts. They will review the wording of it, see, have input in preparation of upcoming negotiations. At the meeting, we had IMAX come in and make a presentation on the flex spending account, which is now required by law, and that they put out bids to various companies, and they're going to make a formal written proposal to us with a recommendation. The cost of administering the flex benefit, it seems to be a minimal amount of cost, so one of the key drivers would be the impact on employees and the service of the impact on employees, which differ from company to company. I also spoke about a wellness day program from Horizon that Horizon is offering, and that they will bring some base to the district when we might be able to have that. With respect to operational review, the business administrator put together, this is the first area we looked at, a review of the transportation department, provided the committee would break down the cost by services, which leads to the next topic, shared service process. We just met with the commissioners tonight. At that committee meeting, we talked about how we're going to approach the meeting with the commissioners, and we prepared a chart that uses guideline for discussions, and we'll be meeting with the commissioners in a little over a month to the next step of this process. Finally, we talked about the ARA slash Title I audit, and the VA informed the committee that the follow-up will take place on October 21st, which will be the next day, and applicable district personnel have been reviewing the corrective action plan in cooperation. It's the Finance Committee report. Next, we come to the hearing of the citizens. Now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within that requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic that occurred. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members in question. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person wishing to speak, please step forward.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Tom from President of the Education Association of the Valley, 330 Cent. of St. Louis. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the interim coordinator of world languages. I see here that it says, pointing to starting tomorrow, with a salary nut to receive $61,000 for the current school year. I'd just like to point out that the phys ed department does not have a coordinator as well. They are running fine since September. The world language department is running fine since September. Last year, the new school was a science teacher, an English teacher. It'll be two English teachers over a two-year period, three math teachers over a three-year period. We still missing our teacher in the elementary schools. I think that if the department is running well in the high schools as it is now, with Mr. Williams running it, and I've heard nothing to the contrary, I don't think we need this position. We can take the $61,000, put Mr. Barron's back in the art room, and get another teacher into the elementary school, so we can afford for every school.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to bear?
Good evening, Mr. President. Alan Thomas, 108 McKinley Street. Yes, Mr. President, my question deals with the business administrator resolution number seven, which is the approval of the maintenance plan, and actually, I have a question that has to do with one of the charts, company maintenance plan. So, Form M1, excuse me. Of that appendix, it's the second last page, the annual maintenance budget amount worksheet for NJAC 6A colon 26A.
Just show which one's major first name.
Because, President, my question has to do with column D there, where it talks about building replacement value, and my question is, where are we getting those replacement values? Because quite frankly, they seem kind of low. And the second question would be, are those replacement values we use to procure property and casualty insurance?
I'd have to look at the property casualty insurance to verify that those numbers carry over to that report and get back to you.
Again, those numbers seem kind of low. Six and a half million dollars to replace Radcliffe? I mean, that's, I hope we're not using them.
Sounds more like our carrying value than replacement value.
It does, doesn't it? So, I'm just concerned if that's all of the question I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to hear? If not, I'll have to read academic resolutions, one and two.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions, one and two, as written.
Start. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Spillera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Correa?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo, we move finance resolutions, one through nine.
Yes, Mr. President, I move resolutions, one through nine, as written.
Start. Discussion.
As it relates to the resolution number seven, I just would like to clarify, it seems as to this process and what these documents represent in general.
These are standardized forms that are provided by the state. They originated as part of the annual quality assurance report that had to be done every fall. They carry over now into the QSA, and it's to provide the state with an overview of what we are doing in terms of maintenance. The dollar values tie into our budget, and we have to record that the actuals for every year over a period of about 10 years. So, it's just, it's a way for the state to monitor the fact that we are maintaining our buildings and doing everything that is required to keep us up to code.
And who actually, how do you compare these estimates for 2012, 13, and the plan? Is that based?
For 2012, 2013?
Just for example, like a little bit.
It's just a budget projection, it's not a hard-fought number that we are being tied to at this point in time. That number will change only to our actual budget, but it's a number based upon what we currently are spending, and what we spent last year, what we're currently spending, and some additional funds for some of the new items that we are planning on doing as part of the maintenance project.
And the 2011 to 2012, how long, those are the numbers that are moving on by this year that we plan on spending?
Yes, those are the budgeted numbers for the current.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, and just on number nine, you know, can we get, some of these will be pre-approved, things like that, can we get the date, like when we vote on it the first time, so we know it's coming around to us the second time? I think that'll solve my problem from the last meeting, you know, so if it says, we approve this on 3/21/2010, we know we're only now verifying as we do on our next vote so that we can track.
Good suggestion.
All the people need to be reminded of the date.
I do.
Yes. I'll see you before, before.
Yes.
There's a check being recommended to be cut for Spizzo. Is that what's related to a referendum, or is that something else? It's check number 087273. I'm talking about $20,000. That's the referendum. That's a referendum, that's going to come from the referendum. Same on Epic, that's a referendum one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Spillera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Correa?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky, we move personnel resolutions, one through seven, and the addendum resolution, person number eight.
Yes, Mr. President, I move personnel resolutions, one through eight, as so.
Discussion.
Not a discussion, but I would just like to make a comment on resolution number three, and I hope that everything goes well with Ms. Kristina Tagg, dealing with the issue of the father's heart attack. I know that was very trying for her, and Mrs. Russo, my family, listening to Tagg who was not standing aboard.
Sir, he served on the board and a commissioner.
And is an active part of the town of Nutley, and I hope his daughter and family is doing well.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Spillera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Yes. Hearing of the citizens. In this section, we allow questions and comments on whole school-related matters. Regulations allot 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address each and every time you address the board, or a person wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Jerry Burke, 45, New York City. I'm the spokesperson for the Repair and Act C Network, and I haven't been here for a while, so you kind of got on my feet. I do have some information I'd like to present to the board tonight. I have a request that I would like to be able to, please consider, but I wanted to just give you some information so that you can have a clearer picture of what the request is. Each packet has, it's actually the policy. It's the policy. Hold on. Hold on, I'm sorry. Policy two, three, four, five, homework. And I did speak to Mr. Lastic about this, and I got told from the Hudson, I need to pay attention. Every year, I have parents that come to me, and they want to know why they keep their homework when a child is absent, like when a day with the child is absent. They don't understand why. So, I had two parents, actually, within a week's time, contacting and saying, you know what, Terry, I do call up, and I'm told that my child can't get the homework until, or I can't get the homework until the child is absent for three days. So, I went through the policy, and I really wanted to just get a clearer picture of what I see here. On the first part of the policy, the national policy, and you know, this is not criticism in any way. It talks about the school should recognize the role of parents, who do the guardians, as suggestionaries, and each parent or legal guardian can assist the school in helping a child carry out assigned responsibilities. Very often, this board does talk about, and I know Dr. Reed had talked about, how, you know, we should give it to the parent, so that the parent can help the school, and the parent can help the child. I mean, that's really important, right? We have parents that are at a loss here, they really don't know what they, what their children, and what they're doing in the classroom. So, it's something that's really important for them to know. So, that's something that I had, I thought that was valid. Then, on page number three, when it talks about the parent or legal guardian, and an absent people may request home of the signers to be continued during the people's absence. Teachers are expected to comply with any such request. Okay. So, now, the policy and the regulation does support that claim. However, in everyone from the time the child is in kindergarten up to the time the child is in kindergarten. is learning, where a 12 year seems to be another rule that you can see at the end, which is, I'm not picking on the high school, the Catholic's that come from the high school handoff. And it does talk about homework and how important it is, and how it provides time for, the purpose of it is to provide time for test preparation, build work and study skills, this is all important stuff. But when we talk about the homework during absences, it says homework shall be obtained from the attendance office during periods of absence depending upon the medical condition of the student. Parents may request homework after the student is out of school for three days. Now, this is where we have a problem, because the kids that would have a problem with this, we think are special needs children, children who are academically impaired, whether it be classified students, or 504 students, or ESL students, have basic skills, these are the kids that are really holding on in a thread, literally. And if an absence to them, it puts them back even further. Like, they could be struggling in the classroom, and this actually, any type of absence, even if it's for two or three days, or even for one day, can make an impact on them. And that's why I'm coming to the board tonight to ask if we can look at that ordinance, or whatever that is, about the three days, and offer the homework to parents who request it. If a parent says, "Listen, my kid's out for two days, can I please have the homework?" It's really up to the parent to know whether or not the child is able to do it as well, if the child is mentally sick, they're not going to have to do homework, but if they are able to. And I know in the grand scheme of things, you're looking into budgets and everything like that, but this really does impact kids because homework is graded, and progress reports come home on homework, and things like that. So if you can please consider that, and we really appreciate it. And like I said, I have spoken to Mr. Laszlo, and he's been very, very helpful, but I just wanted to just share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Just a clarification. What's the reason for three days? Is it?
The academic committee.
I'm not really academic. We're going to review all every policy that's out there.
I understand, because it's really an academic committee.
Right, yes, you're right.
And I should come back, Mr. President.
Thank you.
No, we, we'll be meeting on November 8th, this coming Tuesday, so we'll address that issue in our committee.
I have a question. As a Lincoln School parent, I received this notice Friday, saying that we're utilizing a new attendance line for reporting absences, and one of the items on there is a request for homework. I don't know if that's going to be district-wide, but I know at Lincoln School, I've never had a problem requesting homework, whether it was one day or a three-day absence. So can someone tell me, is this a district-wide recording of absences, and are they then able to collect homework in each of the schools?
Could we address that under new business? We're taking into, eating into the hearing of the citizens' time.
Well, I think this might help with this first question.
No, I understand. You could take this up here under new business, right now, this hearing of the citizens.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to hear?
Thank you, Mr. President. Alan Thomas again. Mr. President, I was glad to see the board meet with the board commissioners over here today, and I would respectfully request that we direct that the program or agenda that you provide to the commissioners be placed on the board's website, along with the committee assignments that were doled out, as well as the date for the next meeting, whatever it was when you all agreed that it should be. Sorry, folks. So that the citizens can, these citizens can keep abreast of these things, but certainly we can't go to all the meetings, so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Not a closed portion of the meeting. Old business. This one.
I don't know who's controlling the mail. It has to do with the school construction. I would, Mr. Kozinski, I would ask the administration committee, when you meet with Thursday in the meeting, and we're talking about the school construction, if we could just possibly consider having our professionals prepare our written report, in which they can clearly identify what was to be done, costs, where we end up, where we end up being, whether or not there's going to be any potential change orders. I mean, throughout this part of the project, instead of us having change orders every two weeks, and, you know, I think we should put pressure to them to identify them now, and also to identify whether or not we would charge back any of those change orders that we've been paying for, if we're authorized. That would be good.
Any other old business? Not new business. Mrs. Russo?
Okay. October 29th, I received a letter as a Lincoln's parent saying, "I'm watching," and he was reporting the current tenant's absences. I'm questioning whether this is going to be district-wide, number one, and number two, the policy for getting homework is district-wide.
Multiple questions. The first, we're trying to move to an online system for attendance at all levels, to make sure we have updated attendance records at all times. And the other one is making sure that parents can call in as efficiently as possible. We're trying to catch up with the times a little bit. In that letter, for homework, it's lying, other than the name of the school, that exact letter went out to every single parent of every single student of all five of our elementary schools, because they're friends of all five of them. As far as homework, it's a much bigger conversation, which Ms. Quirk and I have been having, having teachers as well. It really comes down to instructional philosophy. To answer Mr. Spazado's question, I wasn't here, but in my experience, the idea of three days is that that's when it only becomes an extended absence, at which time they only then request homework be set home because the student needs the extra time. For whatever reason, three days is kind of normal. As Ms. Russo has said, though, my understanding is that parents have reached out, they get homework whenever they need. But it's more about what's conveyed is this an extended absence, or was it just a general absence? They didn't want, I think, in policy, to burden the teacher with having every time any student is absent, even one day, sending home homework personally. So it became when someone recognized it was going to be an extended absence, it's more of a request to make sure a student, as Ms. Quirk was saying, doesn't fall behind. And she brings up a very valid point, that for some students, a day is more than for other students. So, but that, my understanding is that our professionals have been very responsive to parents that are interested in either student, teachers know their kids, and are supporting them as best they can.
Thank you. Mr. Squel.
Yes, Mr. Kozinski. First, I would like to thank you for doing something the board's talked about for years, and that's to get together on shared services. That being said, the meeting tonight, and I thank my one or two committees, but when we went to schedule the next meeting, there was a conflict with two different commissioners on dates. I have one date that was not also good. Commissioner Evans began speaking, and we started talking about dates, to try and say, "Well, it's 30 days, maybe move it a little." Somebody from our board said, "Well, let's just go back to fifth, everybody can't make it." And Mr. Kozinski, you went with that. I did pose an objection there, I'm posing it here. I, walking into that meeting, Mr. Kozinski said to me, "Make sure you remember we're as equal as a commission." Mr. Kozinski, correct that, as we walked in the door?
Absolutely.
I felt that the commissioners stuck together. I felt you as our president not represent office, that's being me being said here, and that we should have worked on a date, since we are this infancy on working together, that was good for all of us, such as we did for the commissioner's stating, who wasn't good on one date, who wasn't good on another date. I take my position here very seriously. I ask questions, I read the paperwork, I do what needs to be done. I would like to be able to be at as many of those meetings as possible, and I think you as our president need to represent us as well, as the mayor did a great job. Even when Commissioner Evans was trying to move it to some degree, somebody from our group said, "Well, the fifth is still in, let's just go, everybody's not going to make it," and you agreed to that. I think that was an improper answer for our president, and I think you should have supported all of our board members, and it's really a cooperative effort. You've been here on other boards, and all have talked about this, we're starting to do something. I would like you to represent all of our board members, as the mayor and commissioners, we're talking about them mostly. Thank you.
Any other new business?
I have a question about the report you gave for the Finance Committee. Why aren't we going out to bid or seek our own proposals for the FSA administration?
That is something that our IMAX, as our representative, were going out for bids, and they were doing this proposal. We were careful in our meeting to talk about that, we have a procurement process, and we want to make sure that it's followed on that, and they are convoluted for that process.
Okay. Are they getting any commissions from the people that are trying that? Okay. Thank you.
Any other new business? If not, or else, oops, I'm sorry.
Sorry. First, I want to thank Superintendent Lazovich for tremendous job he did advising us as board members as to what's going on with the schools during the storm, despite what we didn't have power. It was helpful to have that connection to the schools, I appreciate it. He's been given a lot to handle, and he's a short-term investor, and he's doing tremendous job, I expect, so. I also, in new business, wanted to say everyone, we're going to have to walk to school tomorrow, invite everyone to Spring Garden, but it's canceled. And it hasn't been noted by our superintendent, it's like that we noted.
If you check the district website, we put that up this morning, and it's canceled. And in conversation with Ms. Guardia, she got information after all of her parents, so that, Spring Garden, that is absolutely true. I apologize, it was not my report this evening, but that has been communicated here on our own.
Actually, we need to walk to school a bit safer, because the parents were taking the stairs.
We have all herds of people, especially moving in that area.
But next time, we'll do it, and I hope everyone can come.
As you point out, to be clear, it has been postponed, it will be rescheduled later date, and we will make that available, which is pretty much what the website says. And if I can just for a second, I realize I didn't completely answer one of the initial questions, which is the idea of the policy. To the administration committee, we are reviewing every single policy, as I spoke with Ms. Quirk and Ms. Court, and, you know, all of those, that kind of information, those perspectives are very, very critical, and appreciate your sharing. So, but we are definitely looking at every single one of the policies.
Any other new business? There is. Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12. Now, therefore, if it is resolved, the Board of Education will assess the closed executive session. This time, to discuss two matters. A further result of the discussion can be public by conclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education. And the reasons for discussing such matters, if closed session, they won't exist. So, I can hold this up. Chart two, closed session.